Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Planning Committee taking place in Walton Street, in which the Guildhall is lying. My name is Councilor Jennifer Mutter. I'm the Vice-Chair of the Authority and Chair in this particular planning committee in the absence of the Chair, Councillor Evans. And I would like to introduce all the members of the council who are members of the planning committee who are here on either side of me. And we also have access present led by Simon Finch, who's our Office Director of Regulatory, and we have our Public Board Manager here in Sunderland. And we have our Democratic Service for Water, Claire McCann, at the other end of the room, and various other members who have heard from learning of the development of our sector. I'd like to advise that all parts of this meeting are being audio recorded and live stream with final chapters as well. In addition, a video report of the meeting will be on the YouTube channel of our authority. Can I remind any of those doing virtual to turn off their headphones and mute their microphone until the venue is speaking? Can I also remind members that they are clearly and remember to use your mic? Finally, please allow everyone to ensure that mobile phones and all other electronic appliances are on silent or switched off entirely. I can hear some feedback from the left.
Oh, it's chairman, it's Simon Finch, my other partner.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we will now, the first item has been listed. And because I will be the Vice-Chancellor of the meeting. So I'd like to nominate councillor Warren and Vice-Chancellor Cooney. Is there any other nomination?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm trying to come up. The right hand left. Okay, we now move on to the matters on the agenda. So Claire, could you sort us off any other questions? Thank you, Chair. Would you suggest us looking at councillor Evans, if you might invite a councillor for Beryl and councillor to the time completely? Thank you very much. Are there any suggestions that the membership members would like to make about this business? Councillor Pearce.
I should personally just be going out. I think it's a project in the line of time that the council always built in the past. I live about 500 metres from this. I know this church there, I also know this district. But I know some of the others. Like some of the others, I suppose, this district is going to be a traditional council building place, but it's not for the suburbs. So it would make that clear.
Thank you very much, councillor Pearce. That was a personal non prejudice issue. Thank you. Any others? Councillor McLean.
Thank you. I'm the person non prejudicial on the SO card application. I'm a trustee of the local administration, but I'm not expressing any opinions on the issue.
Thank you. Councillor Reed. Can I see your number?
No, I was directed to you because you couldn't see.
Yeah, the camera's in the way, Alfred. Councillor Levy.
Yes. I'm pretty well aware of the fact that you're not. I would like to do that even. I'd like to do that mission. First, no prejudice, very education.
Thank you. Would you like to comment a bit further? So I think you're just actually mind members, but you don't need to declare a personal interest, just thinking whether it should be the ward member or members to have any interest in it, in involvement, that's different. And secondly, just to say consistently, so I would remind those present that at least some members declared a personal interest due to being acquainted, so I think the part or the representative from the Norton Parish Council last, at the last meeting, and she, the same person is on the list to speak today. So just remind you that it's certainly not the Chair declared an interest. I think two other members may have done as well, to have some interest. They may not be present today then. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, I'll bear that in mind. Membership or subsidies, I don't believe we have any subsidies. We're not involved through minutes, which are a supplementary agenda. So we're happy to accept that supplementary agenda item. Are the minutes of the previous meeting, I don't remember if it was one two, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. And we also need to accept the update sheet on the business item. Are we happy to accept the update sheet, members?
Agreed.
Thank you. So now we move on to item number seven, which is the Old Piree Borough Lane on Port, Poucham. And the office of planning is this vasting. You might take a floor, please. The application is more continued to use for the station, the management station with both the different plans. Anything that could be used without them. I'll actually go into the north of the front row. I cannot speak. You can speak inside my quarters, please. I think people can walk in.
We've got a whirring noise coming from outside. We do have a strange.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So the application is an area around said once, other than the section in Southend, well, of the Apple and an area of the north, one of which we don't want to mention. But this, with various contents, this area had been longer reviewed based on the public's opinion. Layout, as it currently is, is a show of obvious particularity. In addition to the intention of the parish, there is a proposing to reach people of point, or at least to avoid the sight of the world. That is the aerial shot of what this sort of looks like. There may have been some movement, we don't have a real view of it, but actually that is still the case. And quite as taken of, around aside, I have tried to indicate that it would be a bit confusing by an area, but maybe you're taking it not. This field is very similar, very similar to the current point. Not a great place in place, but that's looking into the side from the very lane. And the shape of this particular, we may watch this in the book and we'll keep that position. Just to show you the issues, the wishes of the parish, where's all this that we have to find. And this is a direct election area next to this. Miss, can you just try and speak a little? Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm good, we're doing the job. And so that is the thing that's on the camera. It must be found along the western side of the site. And that is where the arrow indicates, if you can be further cornered, I mean, there is comments, things written on the paper, like you're down there, so I've got to say, that belt of trees is to the south of the old Piree travel site, and we're going to be belt of trees along with the property in the vision area of the road. And yes, along the par山路 with vehicles around it. And this is the northernmost section of the lake, so there's that character in the particular reasons that goes on. Just to give you some indication of how this developed over the years, this is where I wrote in 2000, which shows this lane here. That's what people can give indications, which is very little. One of the many shapes inside, which is there at the bottom. In 2007, there was very little there. In 2013, it should be up to the, yeah, to the local land and to the government, so all these will be at the uppermost corner here, which is now covered inside, the rest of the structure essentially occupied, and you see the content. But it's like the application should be very simple, which we say. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, Miss. So we now move to public speaking. And the first speaker is councillor Tiki Ayor, who is on the parish council representative. Hello. You have three minutes, and if you'd like to start with me.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing me to sit on behalf of the parish. So we are objecting to the proposed development on the drawing room. There's been historical non compliance with enforcement of this year's budget council, as evidenced in parish council meeting minutes over the last five years. So looking for a particular November 2019, October 2016, partly refusing planning permission by the city council on the link 2018, but despite which applied to the two more to increase in size, there are now in excess of 40 mobile homes on this one site, despite permission only being granted for. They are still devastated to think of agricultural purposes, which in Orhan Parish, there's traditionally an snow hoarding and market gardening. It's not in line with the village plan of 2002, currently being updated in 2021. There's no infrastructure in place to support the number of residents in the existing illegal and unplanned development of the site. And that includes things like access to schools, access to GPs, because our local GPs are already overwhelmed, and it takes six weeks to get a GP every month. There's a query over the legality of power and water to the site. There are many concerns and complaints that have been received by the parish council regarding the burning of rubbish, tiles, and commercial waste on the site, causing breathing problems for residents along Tramp Lane and that side of Southwick Road. And this is still ongoing, despite various attempts to enforce the cessation of the activity. And we would ask you to refer to the activity and enforcement of this to the escape fire, which you though find the activity still continues, but not with the frequent harm. Public rights of way down there have been made inaccessible due to threatening behaviour by the owner of the site and his family, resulting in many villagers being too frightened to make their voices heard in public meetings, and asking to remain anonymous for their personal. There have also been many complaints received of threatening and intimidating behaviour by the owner of the residence towards villagers who continue to try to lose the public rights of way and for the public.
That's your three minutes, I'm afraid. Would you like to finish your sentence, please?
Yep. And we already have one large mobile development contribution to drive. We don't have the resources to support another. And there's not, there is only obvious, it's found in six counts of police activity at the site since March.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, wishing. Members, do we have any questions of clarification? Thank you. Councillor McLean.
Thank you. I would be to expand on, I want my law as a thought, let's, let's.
The, there was a time on a member of the.
Sorry, councillor McLean, that wasn't a question of clarification. That was an incorrect question, a question for expansion of information.
Respect, Chair, it was a very good.
Chair, you may like interrupt there as well, just to say, look, so it's actually not a primary material consideration, which is probably more of a point.
Yes, a material consideration, I'm afraid, sadly. And, okay, councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Two points, if I may. The public rights of way, have this been reported to, I can count on you, are the responsible authorities?
It has been reported by our parish council, which are.
And could you just remind me of the public transport availability, looking at the sustainability of the site in the long area?
There is no commentary or, I do not talk to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Reed, thank you. Any further questions of clarification? Okay, thank you very much, councillor, that was very helpful, thank you. We now move to the ward councillor, Liam Cattler. And councillor, you have time for this, will you read anything?
Thank you, Chair. I don't think it's necessary for me to go into great detail of the officer's report. Clearly, what's the case for refusal, the non compliance with local plan policies, and the parish council have articulated the views of the community very, very clearly. I think that is useful for me to put to the committee the context of the village of North Orhan, which is a small village along two, mainly along two roads, Frantie and Southwick Road. And when I was elected councillor ten years ago, I think there were about 450 registered electors. The bus service had just stopped, there hasn't been a bus service there for 11 years. The shop was just on the point of closing petrol station. Closed a few years before that, so that's cleaning all the ground about 10 years ago. I think the pub closed 15 years ago. The only facilities in the village, maybe more than that, the only real facilities in the village are our petrol, some allotments, some plant fields. Since that time, due to the vagaries in planning system, the population, the number of registered electors in the village now sits under 50, due to the expansion through local development certificates of Wicken Court Park Home site. So what we've had is an increase by more than 50% of the, nearly 50% of the population, with no concomitant planning gain in terms of facilities at all. So this is clearly quite an unsustainable position for the village as it stagnates without the addition of further residential caravans at the Fergo Grant Lane site. So the development of additional poor quality residential caravans further along is not sustainable in the village. The introduction of new information at such a late stage, I don't see as relevant. This is not an application for specifically gypsy traveller, specifically gypsy traveller sites, so I don't understand why unverified claims about the submission of who is present there has any relevance to this application. So I would urge that the committee refuse this application, and also the council moves to enforce that as quickly as possible, and reinforce the residents there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McLean. Do we have any questions of clarification, others? No, thank you very much. We now move to the supporter, Mr. Robert Patton. Miss Patton, you have the system, you have three minutes and you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to present this deposition in favour of my client's application and against the officer's negative recommendation. This application relates to 19 of 25 existing pitches at Fergo Lane. Four offered planning permission and super local development certificate. A group of four was permitted by the officers in 2018 because, quote, relevant national and local planning policies indicate there may be justification to use rural sites for the special needs of travellers. And the four units that are located on the application site have in themselves very little impact on the character and appearance of the surrounding area. They stand beside Fergo Lane, open to view from Footpath 10. This site is not within Southam Town Park, a strategic or local gap, nor is it of ecological, historical, archaeological, or all. The only third party agenda, or un-parish council, considers that the project has a detrimental impact on the local environment and countryside. But your council's own landscape officer has no objection. 1984, perhaps the county council deemed itself, he said, the 25 pitches of widely ranging digital to meet the needs of Winchester. The site was, however, sold in 2015, and its pitches have been unavailable for three years now. All 25 pitches at Fergo Lane are occupied. While strategic planning asserted that there is no outstanding five-year requirement for gypsy traveller sites, such a need would soon be generated if my client's proposal was to be thrown away. Eighteen years ago, Inspector Tampton issued four gypsy travellers' sites on the Clearwater side in Tewesford District, because they were within two to three kilometres of primary schools and a doctor's surgery. Fergo Lane is 2.5 kilometres from the services that particularly is equipped in the village centre. So for gypsy travellers, it is a sustainable location. How about 23 of the government's planning policy for travellers' sites states that applications should be determined in accordance with the presumption in favour of sustainable development? There would be considerable benefit in a subject to permission being reported today. If that's not to be favoured, determination of this application should be deferred to enable outstanding issues such as litigation and design, to be progressed with consent. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for keeping within three minutes. Members, do we have any questions of clarification? Yes, councillor Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Tutton. When we get to this site as being.
Councillor Reed, could you speak into the director's microphone? Be clear of that, please, thank you.
Mr. Tutton, you referred to the travellers of site. Can you verify they are all travelling parents living on that site?
None. There are two, certainly.
Thank you. And councillor Pearce.
Mr. Tutton, councillor Reed, I've travelled to travellers of the gypsies, so can you please tell us precisely the 19 caravans of the on foot sites? How many actually are gypsy, are actually far travellers?
I believe that all 19 are.
No, it's not, pardon.
Sixty-four thousand.
Could you tell me how many are these, please?
None.
The act actually defines them as two, as a group, so.
Yes, I think so.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Any further questions, members? No, thank you very much, Mr. Tutton. Okay, this is nothing. And if you have anything you would add to the report on those contributions?
I don't think so, there aren't any questions, so.
Fairly, thank you. So we now go to questions from members to the officers presenting. And I think we go through principal development and design and layout, that's major, so it's been important to begin. Any questions on that to pass the board? No. Oh, I think it's not, councillor Pearce.
Sorry, it's councillor Pearce, can we get something else? Yes, the layout to vote, the, the title is a little obscure. I presume we're talking about the proportion of the caravans on the site, which were given permission to be on that site in 2018. I think if I can work out the table, the plot reference is here on page 10. When that application came in, indeed, when this application came in, was the site planned submission with an application denied, or denied with anything, but certainly in line with policies relating to the layout of gypsy travellers' sites?
And the one that was granted permission, which was for caravans at the top in 2018, that did have a slight limit. And for the plan, which I've shown as part of my presentation, I can go back to that, apparently, but with this, also with the application, as I refer to in the update sheet, there is, there's lots been a variation, a lot predicted, shown as, like briefly laid out according to the targets of the gypsy or the travelling parts. So we can't consider that as much of this application, because it would be a group of persons, so it could be pretty common as well. But yes, I mean, there was the layout plan, but it shows what was actually there, although we didn't potentially quickly there.
So there's no layout, but now, which relates to, or confirms, to what should be embodied through the Vice-Plenary Act for traveller, gypsy travellers' sites.
Yeah, one was purchased in 2019.
It's the week before caravans, not.
No, 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 that is the 19, but it is the full size. And but as I said, it's got to this late stage, we would need to redesign a bit, changing pretty much everything, and it can't really be done, so in the determination of this particular application.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Councillor Edwards.
No more questions, we just go.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. Is it possible to identify the original four caravans out of this picture? To what would they be? But there is also two more that I think Mr. Tutton referred to as having a legal status to be on site. I'll give, I'll go as a fan.
I get that. How long have you? And yes, I mean, if you've got any, I don't know, it's like.
Thanks for the three. The area plot, the path of, the northernmost area plot we have is the bike pile, which originally goes to Tinkley, and then following the option to complete, which is confused when it's just being called the mission. Obviously, that's not in the application area.
That's to do with your business.
So they're not, they're nothing to do with this actual application or sport.
So am I correct in that nothing that is illegal permission is on the site? Can you clarify that?
The, 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 I was, but encouraging, I'm looking at the iteration of this application, if I can sort of.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bennet, thank you.
Any other, Chair? Let's certainly design the layout of that section. There are various references to this screen, caravans, the back place space, and so on. So in your opinion, in your opinion, would the site be capable of making all 19, isn't there a suitable space? Because obviously, oh, must be several, not in safety, so it's about.
Sorry, how would, please, this, how would safety be?
So by not saying, that may really, you mentioned that the caravans are very close together, certainly too close, except for self extended. Is there enough space on that site to operate in, in meeting all necessary conditions for a site? Is there enough space on that site to operate in, meeting all necessary conditions for a site?
The site of the current is currently with not applying a license or caravan, but with standards on drainage. They're fairly significant, right, to each other, don't they?
Okay, shall we move on to the rest of the report, please, members? Any questions on the rest of the report? No?
Chair, please, Chair. I'm not quite sure where it comes, I only managed to get the report last night, because my electronic was still not good. With regards to, I'm not quite sure where it comes, the storage of gas cylinders, well, the photograph shows a collection of cylinders being stored, obviously insecurely. There's one, you know, that number is different. Syllables, they're usually happening not away in the south area. These were just part of that ninety-one cylinders. Is there health and safety issue with it, by mistake?
It may be health and safety issue.
Which I know is not common.
But it's not actually a valid consideration. It's our favourite mark.
Okay, all right.
Any other continent planning, best to expand on?
Could I therefore ask, does this meet the normal standards set out in two thousand and eight, which will obviously take into account the storage of explosive materials?
I thought it was better that it doesn't make what it's allowed to do.
Thank you, members. Any further questions? No? Let's move into debate then. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. This is a site that can be seen in general, probably, at least that collection of units. It is very disorderly, very disorderly. The range that's up there, it's been obviously identified that nineteen units cannot fit safely on that site. And that in itself is a major concern. Obviously, if the fire service or any of the emergency services had that, it might encounter some problems. It's an ongoing problem in this area, and even if we were to, you know, endorse this application, what worries me is the next step, which is obviously the enforcement. Obviously, enforcement has proved to be exceedingly difficult over the past years, as the district councillor has already identified. So I will go along with the officers' recognition that, quite frankly, there is a danger to the task.
Thank you. Councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Chair. It's interesting, this application, looking at both descriptions, it says to reduce the land for stationery or residential caravans. No mention of the numbers of caravans on the site. No mention of, I've heard it before, mentioned a couple of times, what would happen to the additional caravans on the site, whether they would be moved or not. No mention of, we have no information about those layouts that conforms to the design layouts of these sites within the Act that it takes... To have this information, we don't have this information, we cannot even find out exactly whether these folk are Gypsy or travellers, or anything else. What I can make out from this Marsman's report, this information has been asked of the agents of the owner for this, it has not come forward. When I look at the history, in twenty twelve, two additional residential caravans withdrawn. It says two additional to the original four tent position. In twenty sixteen, four residential sites withdrawn. Twenty sixteen again, six sites withdrawn. Twenty sixteen again, twenty-eight of the caravans withdrawn. Twenty seventeen, twenty-sixth site, caravans on this site withdrawn. Because all the history withdrawn, it's almost so, it's a question, every time there's an enforcement question raised about this site, a new issue is raised, a new application comes in. And I think it's time to draw a line on this. We cannot keep on going, adding the nice... Even if it's temporary permission of things, in what clearly is a site that is not laying out correctly, it does not conform, I mean, this is not a planning application, it didn't conform to IG standards as far as drainage. This was a figury site, nothing about nitrate pollution on this site, people living on it. There's nothing about that. Uncertain about the air discharge. I must admit, the token promise about our own landscape people, I mean, no objection. I don't think that, Mr Finch, perhaps, if we clearly what happened here, because looking at that, past the oil and the environment, quite frankly, I can't see how any landscaping thing could conform here. It is not sufficient about any landscaping on this site. So again, it's, no, we don't have this information, we don't have this information, we don't have this information. Oh, move it twice, and then we'll go back as soon as the enforcement starts to relax. They were pissed. I understand it's political game, but really, I'm sorry, Mr Tutton, but, you know, we met before, I've heard you before, you know the game, if it is a game. And I'm sorry, as I'm concerned, getting to draw a line on this. Unless proper information about the proper, correct layout of this site can play, to enforce the standards that were drawn up in agreement with the Gypsies' and the travellers' law. This is all done and agreed, and yet not a pass applies to this site. I'm sorry, I must agree with what the case office says. I just cannot see any way this would be permitted. You asked for equality to be shown, well, I am sure equality, because if this was an angle, then it'd be to an end. You know that. We all know that, but certainly because the Gypsies' and travellers' sites were so entitled, says that we don't have that information precisely. I'm sorry, I cannot see where it begins to conform to anything that should compare. Oh, we don't need, no equality, I'm sorry, it's just not too bad.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Any further contributions to the vote? Okay, let's... Yes, I'm listening. Would you like?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to provide some little clarity before you decide to make your decision. Just hearing what some of the contribution of the councillors, etc., obviously, you have to judge the application on its merit, as of everything that you've heard today. And obviously, the evaluation here, obviously, has put those points across, and you have to consider those objectively, regardless of, you know, contributions to it, whatever, so you've just got to stick to this application and everything that you've heard today that is put across, just so clarity, and if you're there as the case, and we feel that's exactly what was in my judgment of the reporting. Also, in terms of the layout, because that was something that came up on several occasions, as this Marsman has explained, he did receive some information, but that was late in the day. And, you know, as she's explained, if that was the application, we'd have to attention to that, whether we would react to it, etc. So, yeah, we determined it, or determined it, so we've provided it in terms of allowances, or if that's an issue, as it's set up in the office's report. And also, just, you know, to comment that in the end, there are certain things that you can control by condition, in terms of requirements, etc. Your employers should have commissioned you, but that's not possibly recommended. And I'm just saying that, because people made comments about, you know, reviewing this caravan bitches and those sorts of things, and what those would do, and how they store items, stores, and I say, with planning permission, that review, and all the sites that are conditions that carry use for things to control detail, like lighting, orts, etc., etc., in terms of that layout of the site, which has come off work on a number of different occasions. So anyway, that's just something that's out, Chair, just to give you a bit of clarity there before you take your decision. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Finch. Okay, so the recommendation is to refuse this application, and the reasons are considerable, and they are made out on pages seventeen and eighteen of the report. Mrs Marsman, did you want to contribute where everybody goes that?
Yes, indeed. On the other side of the court, we did have seen signed European flights checklist, which can address the last two, that we thought were much based on diversity and all trades. And so we've got to start with undertaking, which may be a very good contribution to that.
Okay, so we are recommending refusal on the basis of points one and two in the report. Okay, that's very good. Thank you very much, indeed. So, members, there's a favor of refusing this report, please, this application. Sorry, Chair, that's all members unanimous. Thank you very much. So this application is refused. We're going to take a five-minute break to allow officers to move around and things to be done, and so on. So we will start again at sixteen minutes past ten.
Nothing but it's a lot.
Okay, members. I'm going to go on. Okay, members, thank you very much. We now move to item number eight on the agenda, which is the cottage well-being swap. And the office of the centre is, we will have. I can quickly repeat that to you, page four, third, cottage well-being swap. The application is for the conversion existing round for everything section, create a larger kitchen, and be kept in a kitchen setting, as an extension to the north, creating an annex and a relative version of block space, creating all and all relations to the back inside. They're also, you pay that. Here we have the location, then. I'll now go over my site photos, just to make you aware that the school notes and each site that you took the photos of, I think, said the time. There's also a map from the length corner, just to give you an idea of where the camera is. So here you have the photo taken within the site boundary. Here you can obviously just the white. Photo taken in the driveway access. Photos taken in the rear garden facing the rear elevation. Thank you. I'm interested to show you the two original outbuildings in the pantry. Do you see the photos leading to the purpose of the design? Photos taken in the very, very far corner of the main garden, listening to the post garden living, and future imagination trap. Again, photos taken in the past, just to give you an idea of how similar the buildings are. Photos taken in the name of the pantry in the. Photos from the well name. Here you can see that the English, the main property, the main property is just the manage. Again, a bit further from the well name, you have its entrance here to our question. Well, just over here, just obviously the main way, the main property. Photos taken from the public runway across the field. Here you have the main property and that can be viewed. Again, further down the public runway, the meat and the second. Going to the private existence section. Third floor. This being round. First floor. This being first floor. Post nurse floor. This in long area. Post long area, forming a sentence. This in elevations. O's elevations. And O's garden. Thank you, Hannah. Okay, we now move on to public participation and our friend of speaker is the objector, Miss Stevens.
Good morning. I live at the beach next door today.
Nothing. Thank you, Mr Stevens. If you would like to switch on your wifi, press the button, the box and I like, and you have free access.
Thank you. The objection by our village office explains why we cherish our home and have its heritage and character at the heart of what I'm about to say. We are very concerned as to how this application has progressed despite the South Down Zone policies and the adopted village design statement. In all our meetings, we have made it clear we have no objection to an annex for the exceptional need, but the scale of starland development goes well beyond that which is necessary to achieve it. Set in a prominent position, our houses stand out in the important village view. The key points to illustrate our concerns are, from a modest family home through extensions, fur cottages with double in size to six bedrooms, five bathrooms. Even with exceptional need, SD thirteen thirty-one makes it clear if it pertains to complement the scale, height, massing, appearance, character of the existing dwelling, or have an overall impact on the landscape of the park, it should be resisted. A sentiment echoed in the village design statement that buildings should not dominate distant views nor the immediate surroundings. These are the key measurements from the plans themselves. The design access statement complains to GIA within thirty percent. This is clearly wrong. The GIA of the furniture will increase by eighty-one percent. Just the footprint increases by sixty-eight percent. The annex required by the exceptional need is sixty-three square meters. The occupation of one person with no provision of his own kitchen. The footprint of the house is only eighty-five meters, which is currently enjoyed by a family of five. It's a sheer scale of the annex that causes a knock-on effect. Nearby sister houses have utilized their lost spaces by extending their existing stairs. Our three houses are beautifully designed and our rear gardens are not overlooked. By moving the stairs, it necessitates the large former, together with the three skylights, a hundred and thirty years of privacy in the rear gardens where we lost room. There is a symmetry about our houses, even though the bird cottage is already wider. Three meters of roof extension will have a much smaller here and obvious visual difference. The extensions to the south, east and north elevations with circular windows, not the natural details, will change the cottage's character. Symmetry will be lost, its size will become overbearing and out of proportion to its neighboring properties. It will change the landscape for the many walkers using the footpaths and lanes. The ground floor changes and additions continue this perversion from the original character with bifural doors, placed cables, and the bringing forward of the new bay confused the standout feature of the original front bay, as commented by the carriage person. These very facts appeared in many of the thirty-six objections received from local people and visitors to the area. To conclude, our strategic policies, SD four and five, will really be complying with. It states development proposals are only permitted where they conserve and imparts landscape and character unless the design appropriate sympathetic to its setting and you spoke to its massing, roof form, materials, night and day visibility, vernacular detail. Simply, I believe, is not necessary, no development of the house in sight, which the eighty-one percent may demonstrate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Stevens. Members, do we have any questions of clarification? No? Thank you very much. Just see if you can switch off the mic very well, that's great. Thank you. Okay, we have next, our fourth, Mr Cheswick. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. You're doing this sort of dad to become a member. The old simply enabling his safe care, but on several other levels, this feels like the right it has been. My dad's parents were in domestic service on the country estate, on the line for the first hundred funds for the cottage. My dad's daughter was made from my dad's father's barber shop. And although he's not a great cook at the moment, in his pride, dad himself was more than the sweet ear by the cream for his contributions in northern Paris. He actually served on the board of the countryside agency, Alaxton England, in two thousand and three, and the decision was made to designate South Downs as an option park. It's therefore a nice thing that he might have the opportunity to spend his final years in community peace. We are aware that we live in a very special place and this appreciation that shapes all our decisions and approach to this process. We wanted to get the design right. To that end, we chose to work with the planning authorities over the time of the application to ensure that the scale, the height, the massing, the character of the design are suitable for the setting, as well as meeting dad's many opinions. We have four sit-down meetings under the labors on the other side, who have made over twenty alterations to the design in response to their feedback. We also made changes in response to the feedback from the parish council, and this led to us getting this court. As our elected representatives, you will make your own terms on this issue. My only plea is that there's a clear decision today, I'd like, as we now pull you into this process, and you will understand that time is a must. That's another agree, again, hopefully, I guess, finance for your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr Cheswick. Members, do we have any questions of clarification? From the Cheswick. And I have one. You didn't raise it, but one concern has been about the party wall issue. I believe that the extension builds against the party wall, but I know that's a civil matter. Maybe if you could just reassure us that you have been discussing that with the name of that.
Yes, certainly. We discussed this based on taking advice from an engineer. The reality is we're going to have to do some work on that wall anyway, because it needs help. So that will be part of this in regards to going through all the civil processes, the nation of that.
Any other questions, please? Counselor, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You just said that the parish council supports the application, but I have in mind, obviously, it's a parish council object, and we ran into excessive bullying.
Yes, so the timeline, the was, we point through pre-application, you know, submitted an application, what's the planning advice about, we submitted an application, we wrote to parish council, we explained very good that came down on objection, we gave some things to do, we went and did those, made some changes, also in response to some of the objections that we've seen by the public, brought it back to parish council, and then they wrote the support sentence. We said it's a parish council's petition, first time we got an objection, second time. I don't see that on my page.
That's a very good question, Mr Finch. What's the pitch?
Oh, Hannah, you make your jet, sorry, I prefer to pay attention to page thirty-eight, under the top of the page, it does say that the small parish council is object, underneath there, it does state that they do support.
Excuse me, the word I'm talking to you is wood.
That's following the second, the first, but they may go to the fourth table. And the second. So it's what we're doing today.
And, Counselor, please.
Do we take it that the only official response we had from the parish council is an objection?
No, I believe we take it that the official response is once the pattern moved changed with the advertising to say that, they now support it.
I was just saying, you did very poorly, the top of the page policy, so parish council is supporting the application.
Yeah, I'm fair to support it, thank you.
Well, it's thirty elements, sorry, that means too much.
I think there's an element of historical doubt.
Doubt.
Not doubt, but a journey. Parish member have been on with where they are in this application, that's a deep reason. Any further questions of clarification? No? Thank you very much. Okay, Hannah, did you want to say anything else following the public?
Thank you, Chair. My just first point, I was, Mr Cheswick, had definitely gone through extensive pre-application on this site, and the actual, the original submission includes a two-storey sized section, and we have in fact important design to certainly reduce it in height, width, sets it back, and certainly a lot more keeping the life area to sit. So we have one of the ultimate issue that this application does sit within the area appropriately, doesn't impact the national park for the last.
Thank you. Okay, we now leave two questions to the officer. From the members of the PNC, I'm going to come for a question, I completely ignored. And I understand from the way you've put it, that he would like to be consulted about the light, I have various conditions on light. Is it possible to add that to the conditions? Is it? What is he consulting on?
For sure, Elizabeth, one of the conditions asked for the backup lights or smashing backup lights, it is a condition.
No, that, the neighbour, the immediate neighbour on the other side. Yes. Would just like to be consulted about. So if we can just include you in those discussions about lighting?
Thank you, Chair. So I asked, I had to open to the advocate, the neighbor, sorry, yesterday, with obviously on condition, sorry, there is a lighting condition on there that that subject is actually exploring any external lighting, so if one can pose anything I can get, if they do wish to do that, they will consult us. And I do know that it would seek short of the, we will consult them, obviously, without any condition. But that would probably be a serious matter to be, yeah, for myself, but we aren't the ones here.
Well, I mean, presumably anything that would be agreed, it would have to comply with our national park policy on the dark night skies and that all, I think it should be reassured that if it was agreed, we would apply strictly with those conditions. And the other question, about a holy tree and the roots, they may be damaged by the construction. Is it possible to take those tree roots?
We can certainly put face in place, but for the plan, I don't actually, any impact comes back to it anyway. It's not TPO, it's not actual policy, it's such that there would be any official concern assumption. And also, the tree itself is not within the information site, it's just the roots. But there's no actual ground to, probably in the area, it's almost the last.
Thank you. We do have the country wall issue, which is a civil matter. So whatever issues are about, which we discuss that sort of planning issue. But can you just tell what this South National Park, there was all about percentage increase in the site of the hat. There's some concern that it's significantly more than that. But it's something considered is the maximum extension allowed within the South National Park. But you could just explain why that doesn't define this case?
Chair, so it doesn't find this case because it's thirty percent more as such, it's certainly more than the box that's intended to do. That only applies to small redeployments, small redeployments for the national park, as it means to have eternal square completion ratio hundred and seventy or less as of December two thousand and two. Anything from two thousand and two onwards, that would think the same issue, I know it's about small redo, people to go into their percentage now, assumption. But the back of the issue on this, the application, the property is always in season, not just going to, I know that the hand section back against, but that's still relevant in part, are fine, as well back out, so it's twenty-two. So the situation is just buying it, and I bet us trades for something, understand a bit, but it's very much a gateway, a gateway to that, doesn't define it.
Thank you. That's very clear. Okay. Any other questions, members, to your please? So yes, Alison.
Well, it's, it's just a clarification, if I may, Chair. Not here in the existing site plan, there was an area that you could maneuver a vehicle, so it always moved out in four position. However, when you look at the proposed site plan, that availability to maneuver is much reduced. And considering this is on a double bend, also a drawing road coming in from one side as well, why was it not deemed sensible to ask and feel authorities with regards to the highway issue?
I think, Chair, I'd like to disagree with you, I think it actually increased the markings, they've gone from one and a half apartment space to four. If you go from the proposed site plan, you can see the base of the number one, two, three and four. So although this property doesn't hold that many cars, they more than adequate space to actually turn it, convert it to one or two and still allow. I find our oil drum raising part, it is quite difficult to reverse out of this areas, which you know that those areas can be better parked for, but it's actually, I'm actually not sure to take this step. Also, the road isn't, it's not a six mile an hour road, highly used to play, whereas the consultant and patch highways, they're actively available to consult them.
But it is on the double bend, with a road jump.
It is on the double.
It's on a double bend and a road jump. And looking at the plans, it appears they've got less space to turn around a vehicle. Before four car spaces are filled, you're going to have to reverse out or you're going to go extremely badly.
I agree, you were, but again, you just said you've got some very, very careful in the purpose, so you can control it. Well, I mentioned last time, it was a great good track, then down the hedging. And I missed it last time, and it was a great good track, and then down the hedging. So that was quite amusing to the back, because we were talking about that, I think. So if anybody in that group there are very aware, I've never been there, and know that, it's best laws will be up there.
Any other questions to the officer? On the whole, what was, the whole of it? Question on conditions or? Anything? No? Okay, debate. Anybody wish to continue, that would be it.
Chair, I think there's always a problem when you come to houses that are very similar in the original design. I mean, one somewhere the other starts to increase the size of the buildings. It is, it is at this maximum size that they would suggest, and the solid the objects are placed there safely. It still exists, and obviously we have access to and from there, if there is. I can see, unfortunately, they're planning on using to refusing motion.
Thank you, Councilor Clay. Any other contributions?
I would like to just say, I did read all the information with depth. And I was very concerned initially that this was owed by the side. And that, you know, it was too big. But I think that it's been very carefully looked at by all those concerned. And various changes have been, it's a right to, to bank decisions. For the work that they have put in, they are marketing for you. To try and comply with policy and to reassure neighbours who saw that what they're planning is going to be acceptable with visual impact. And the neighbours, I hope that they will be equally considered in the ways that should be given a plan. So I'd like to thank everybody who's on today. We have considered all the aspects of this. Even, even what we have mentioned, I mean, this E T, all has been, can be and advised levels, we can let it, the issues have been raised, can be violated, and right now, it can be met approved.
Any other contributions, members? No? Okay, we'd like to move to the votes now. So, this application is recommended by your approval. Subject to the conditions on page forty-five, or informatives from page forty-six. And all depends, which are referred to on pages four and then the fourth and the tenth. So can I see all those in favour of accepting this application? Very unanimous, Chair. Okay, thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, Chair. Okay, I think we're going to have a coffee break. And we will resume at five past eleven.
They just won't be available in outfield, without, I mean, when air conditions are quite nice.
Some of them also.
Did you just have a look? When you used time.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure I can do that. There's so much. In fighting, that's.
Is he still?
Yeah, he's over in the, he's progressing over.
Yeah.
He's actually lost secretary. Lost secretary.
So he's enjoying.
Yeah. He wanted to rest for a job.
It was always here that we went to where. Oh, not quite.
Went again. Oh, yeah.
And the lady was yes.
Another one of his chances, yes. Bloody shock.
What, even my lunch is that?
No, I would say. We know why, we know the kind of.
Because none of the chaplains in me. Oh, so Julian. He was mostly. But what is my system?
One of the things.
Welcome back members to the planning committee. And we now we want to item number nine, which is the SO carriage on Winchester Street. The opposite centre wing is the Clayton. And she's going to be presenting remotely. So Nicola, I hope you can hear us and if you'd like to give your presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good morning. We'll be introducing the retrospective change of use of petrol filtration to hand car wash and associated works, including drainage and the relaying of the concrete yard at Esso, Winchester Road, Bishopswortham. Next slide, please. The application site consists of a formal petrol station situated in the settlement of Bishopswortham. The site is within Bishopswortham town centre and on the edge of the Bishopswortham Conservation Area. To the west of the site lies a designated protected open area forming part of the watercourses leading to Bishopswortham Pond, which is heavily planted with trees. To the south of the site lies Bishopswortham Palace. Next slide, please. The site currently comprises of a concrete forecourt, a modern single-storey building with an old saying canopy, and a separate brick office building, which is attached to the development at the rear. The site benefits from two vehicle accesses of Winchester Road. The site is within flood zone one and very low risk of surface water drainage. Drainage is our sewer due to the contaminated water from the car wash facility. Following site visits carried out by the council's enforcement officer and environmental health officers, it was confirmed that sufficient drainage has been installed on the site to allow wastewater to drain away without any harm to the surrounding wildlife assets. Next slide, please. It is recommended that a buffer of native planting is established on the western boundary between the car wash and the sink. This and other biodiversity enhancements, including bird boxes, sensitive lighting, additional planting, can all be secured via condition. A further photograph of the site. And a wider panoramic view of the site. Next slide, please. To conclude, the officer recommends permission subject to safeguarding conditions. Thank you.
Very much, Nicola. Now we move on to the public speaker. And first speaker is the Reverend John Williams. Hi, John. You have three minutes when you're ready to begin. Yes, just press the button at the bottom of the microphone and the lights will come on. Slide 10, technical hitch here. So you have three minutes.
Hello, councillors and officers. In Richard's book of the plan, policy DM15 states proposals will be permitted whether they conserve or advance the landscape and township framework, including the key characteristics identified in the local characteristics and design of the adopted design statements. Bishopswortham Design Statement states in slip 1.2, further to incorporate appropriate planting with sufficient spacing to shield growths that respect the overall character. The site has already moved to the kind of marks that were in the landscaping plan of and condition two of his most recently approved planning application, 15/01010/12. In part two of the Plan 6.4.86 states, where existing landscape contributes to the character of the conservation area, applicants should review mentions in their proposal for its retention. The applicant has not done this. Furthermore, in DM15, Part IB states, those of which accord with the development plan will be permitted whether conserving ones, especially policies in conservation areas and historic landscapes. The site is directly opposite Bishopswortham House Ruins, a scheduled monument of the great superstate building, and both the signage and abandoned recorded up building reduces the local qualities in both the conservation zone and the class ruins. Speaking of signage, the top foot's total height of the four red signs that said hand car wash that have been attached to the top of the front fence, contrary to DM34, furthermore, DM27, development in conservation areas for extensions and alterations, states they do not dominate principal elevations. DM27 RB also states that with extension alterations, the proposal does not result in a loss featured in the conservation area such as fencing, that has been removed for vehicle access. Natural fencing being the kind of parts that should also be removed and finding ground surfaces which have been concreted over. The developer mentions that there was previously a car wash on site. This avenue was located to the rear of the property, not visible door behind forecourt building, and recycled water between uses. The current operations are at the front of the forecourt and do not recycle or tend to conserve any water, which should meet policy CP13, managing water effectively should be in the central parts of the design solutions. The applicant also contributes CP20, as it does not approve the character, quality or function of the area and stripes the natural compatibility of that part of the conservation area, sitting adjacent to the newly refurbished north pond and opposite house ruins. Overall, this application, change of use does not suit for dislocation, does not concern or implicate capture of the areas within the conservation zone, and with breaking multiple planning policies, I look forward to it being included in our light. Also, although not relevant to planning policy, the developer has not signed up to the responsible car wash scheme, which is funded by the Home Office, which aims to prevent people trafficking, promote fair wages, protect employees on explosive work, and educate others to ensure hand car washes are not mutually harmful to the environment. And just a picture of the signage that I saw in the, the proposal, the signage was around there, but it's on top of the fences as taken last night.
Thank you very much. Okay, sweet. Do we have any questions or clarification forms to Williams? Oh, okay. Thank you very much indeed. That was helpful. Thank you. Okay, we now have the parish councillor representative, Josie Woods. Councillor Woods, if you'd like to speak, you have three minutes.
Josie Woods, Chair of the Planning and Highways Committee, Bishopswortham. The centre of Bishopswortham was designated a conservation area in 1973, with two subsequent extensions and now includes the town centre, the northern south of Stanfords, the Bishopswortham Palace, churchyard and north Bugarian. This was designated to protect the historic centre of Bishopswortham. The site of the petrol station predates the designation of a conservation area and the present building and yard was constructed in the late 1960s. After the petrol station closed, the site deteriorated significantly and Bishopswortham Parish and House of it not object to the change of use to a car wash, provided that the site was improved and tidied to ensure no adverse impact on the Bishopswortham Conservation Area, which by the way it is within, it is not adjacent to, it is within the conservation area. Retrospectively, this condition has not been fulfilled and this site is now an industrial high school within the Bishopswortham Conservation Area. No effort has been made to improve the site as we requested. If the committee is minded to approve this application, we would request that a condition is attached that the site is improved and maintained throughout the time it is used as car wash in line with the standards expected within a conservation area, that is on character or appearance which shows preservation or enhancement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Woods. That was very clear. And we don't have all councillors' thoughts down as well. So Nicola, you heard all that? Clearly completed. Is there anything you want to add to your previous contribution?
Only really to say that we have imposed a condition which does include introducing, along with the biodiversity enhancements, but also some landscaping that can be secured via condition.
Sorry, we missed, it is handling the camera.
You weren't looking.
Councillor McLean, who wanted to ask a question of Councillor Woods, though I apologise. Step backwards to Councillor Woods.
Councillor Woods, talk about the condition to improve the side. Can you be more specific regarding how it feels on what I should be?
In my mind, there are car washes in the very vicinity that do not look like the one in Bishopswortham. The fencing is very ugly and it could be much improved. Much more planting around the area and I believe the concrete floor is very impassable as well. You know, it's got areas where it just appears to have been put down. So it's mainly planting and improved fencing and with signage that isn't quite so ugly as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor McLean. Thank you, Councillor Woods. Okay. I'm sorry, Nicola. Can we come back to what you were saying? If you'd like to repeat what you were saying? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely fine. Just really to confirm that we have put a condition on as advised by our landscape and ecology to require additional information, and that is to really enhance biodiversity. So we would include planting at, also lighting and any sort of bird boxes or other improvements. And that would be by way of a report that would have to be submitted and approved by the local planning authority.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, do we have questions? I think we'll take the report as a whole. So any questions to the officer? Thank you, Councillor Reid.
Chair, on page 76, under other matters, it deals with drainage. I'm aware that the council officers are all the way up ahead with the explosion of the Garthberg, and they explain what traps have been inserted to ensure that contaminated water does not go into the conservation area and into the pond in particular.
Did you hear that, Nicola? Hello? Is Caitlin?
Sorry. Yes, sorry. The signal went there. Regarding the drainage.
Yes.
Sorry, let me just find the drainage officer's report. I know that we did have officers go out and ensure that they were satisfied. We've also had responses back from Southern Water and all certificates have been approved with them as well regarding drainage on the site.
Okay, thank you. Let's answer your question. Councillor Reid.
The answer is no.
Councillor West.
Thank you, Chair. When Mr. Williams, first three minutes. So Mr. Williams went through his three minute presentations, was all then using environmental objects, it was fairly fast. A number of planning requirements were said were not met by this particular application. Is it possible for a planning sector to comment on why this brings us to that view about viewlessness?
Thank you. Miss Caitlin? Did you hear that question?
No, unfortunately not. It's very quiet. I can't hear some of the councillors, unfortunately.
Okay, the question was in response to Mr. Williams's contribution. Did you hear Mr. Williams's contribution? Nicola?
Yes.
So he reeled off a whole list of planning considerations which he didn't believe were being met by this proposal or covered in your report. Did you want to respond to any of those?
Yes, I can in regards to sort of design and the conservation area and sort of point to the fact that the site is in the, it has been part of the townscape for a very long time and the application isn't actually proposing, unfortunately, to change structures on it or remove any of these, the structures. They're trying to really utilise what was already there and make use of a vacant site, providing jobs. So therefore, I do have some understandings towards there in regard to the conservation area.
So therefore, I do have some understandings towards there in regard to the conservation area. But I think we have to, on balance, we can try and improve the site certainly with our condition requiring hedging and maybe some additional planting so long that it does not affect transport and highway concerns. So I think we have the ability there to slightly improve this site. I think we should also take into account that we're using a vacant site that has been there and we're not actually, the works aren't there to remove any of the existing structures that might be considered unsightly.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Westwood. Any other questions? Councilwoman McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Going back to Councilwoman Wood's, going back to Councilwoman Wood's conditioning of the application. I think the question my line was asked, it's the fences that surround us that are totally not being used. Could it be conditioned for those fences to be removed by part of the application? That will certainly improve the site and withdraw the signs hanging from the fence, which I think is what everybody would want. Can that be conditioned, your question?
Yes, Miss Katie, would you just tell us what you consider about how we could use conditions to significantly improve the site, strengthen the conditions? Nicola? Miss Katie?
Good morning, Chair. It's Nick Parker here. I wonder if I could intervene? Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Parker, thank you.
Hi there, sorry. Yeah, in relation, I think we've lost Nikki for the time being, but I've been covering this application throughout its history, as a few councillors will recall. In terms of the current application, we aren't considering the signage and we aren't considering the fencing towards the front. So you are effectively looking at the change of use in its essence, hence the recommendation for permission. We have tried very hard to seek enhancements and they're mainly biodiversity enhancements as a result of the preliminary ecological assessment that was carried out on site. So we're also satisfied with the drainage situation and we've consulted Southern Water and our own drainage engineers who have concluded that the drainage solution is acceptable and won't add adversely effect of surrounding North Pond. So as officers, we feel we've done as much as we can in relation to the constraints of the application before us. As the officer was saying, the site is historic. We do sympathise, it's not particularly attractive in the conservation area. Hopefully in the long term, investment will be made. But in the meantime, we have an application before us for an economic opportunity that's been carried out within the site. So hence the officer's recommendation with the approved or the recommended conditions. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Can I just ask a question, if I may? Miss Williams mentioned the responsible car wash scheme. Is it possible for us to condition that they should join that as a way of reassuring the local population that it's going to be properly run? Is that possible?
I think we can certainly put an advice note on the permission if deemed acceptable by members, pointing the applicant in the direction of the best practice for car washes. It would probably be beyond the scope of planning to impose a condition relating to the actual operations that side.
Okay, thank you. So we could add that as a formative?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, Councilwoman McLean, you have a question, thank you.
Yeah, McLean, if you go back to the fences, as Mr. Parker just said, it's historic that it was a car wash for the petrol station. Historically, it didn't have a fence ring. So now we have a fence ring that is recent, not historic. So again, come out that we find somebody removing the fence around the building would make it totally acceptable, I think. It's just very important.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Councilwoman McLean?
I agree.
Okay, Nick, did you have a comment on the fencing? I know it's not part of this application. Is that an enforcement issue or is it there without planning permission?
Yeah, that's the question. Does it need planning permission? And if it's two metres in height or below, then it won't require planning consent. So we'll certainly take that away from this meeting and look at it and come back to the applicant to address that. But in terms of this application, it doesn't form part of the application. I'm going back to the, I don't know if we can pick up any of the slides. It is a green mesh fence, I believe. There's some Harris fencing that potentially covers the access when not in use. But I wonder if we can just have a quick look at the photo again to see. I think it's the final slide. Yeah, is that the fence we're talking about, Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Some other concerns have been raised about the signage. Is it possible to condition the signage?
That's over, that is, because Mr. Williams said it's over the.
Yeah, because it apparently attached to the top of the fence.
It's from the other way around.
Yeah, again, certain signage will require advertisement consent and other signage may not. You certainly have, I recall in the advertisement regulations, a number of signs within the forecourt of the premises such as this are deemed permitted. So again, we go away and have a look at that. And if there are any new signs that have popped up in the meantime, we certainly talk to the developer and look to resolve those issues.
Is it possible to condition the signage or at least ask that details of the signage should be agreed by officers?
I think, again, we can probably put an informative on to say, you know, please be aware that some signage will require advert consent. And, but in terms of, I'm making some legal advice on this, but in terms of putting a condition on a planning application requiring the signage to be submitted under a separate, under separate regulations may not work in planning terms. But I've sort of asked maybe Fiona to advise on that particular condition.
Thank you. Simon, did you want to advise on that?
Yes, yeah, it's very important, the signage is very important, I think. I was raised by the best people, but this is Nick Parker, it's flat up. There are two separate parallel regimes, so that's not said in the right. And quoting policies is relevant to that. But I think the point is you've got to deal with the gifts, which is what planning application seeks to change, which is regularly advised. On top of which, separately, if there are advertisements on the premises with required consent, they would need a separate consent. And what Mr. Parker was saying is we can investigate that. And if there are ones which are, they basically fall into two types. If you think of permit to develop a house and things like that, you can really concept what needs planning permission, what you can build without it. Well, there's an equivalent to adverts called deemed consent. And so some adverts require permission, some don't, they're priority. There's another equivalent of permission to develop by, effectively that's how it works. What we can do and what Mr. Parker was saying to do is we can look at any advertisements that have been provided within that site and if they do require permission, then we can control them. If they're deemed consent because they're too small, size of the back, within the site, et cetera, et cetera, then they're just allowed to do that and that's just the way it works. Like, we can build the extension without a requirement of permission. So that's how that works. So they're kind of, they run parallel to each other. But what we can take away as part of the resolution today, Chair, is we can look, investigate that. And the other thing that Mr. Parker also was saying there, I think, to be on from Councilwoman McLean's point, also was raised by the Parish Council, is the boundary treatment in terms of whether the fencing is a breach. And if it is, what we would do about that, I think that's what Mr. Parker was saying. I think the constraint that we've got on this is the fact that it is a site that perhaps if it applied for suspension day, wouldn't necessarily need policy, would get a roof. It's been there, as the Parish Council described, very in quite a number of years, prior to conservation, I think. She said, as a result of which, we've got what we've got to deal with. Many of these car washes use or reuse these type of sites, they go to car showrooms, whatever, none of which is particularly attractive. This is a conservation area which makes it more sensitive where you're starting from. It has that historical, it's a filling station and that's kind of where you're starting from. But I think what Mr. Parker was saying in terms of boundary treatment particularly, we can have a look and see if that is a breach and whether, and if it is, then again, we may be able to do something about that. So we can certainly look into that and we can certainly look into the advertisements. And the other thing was, again, I don't know whether, lost this case, I think, but I think there will be some advances as I'm reading it from what she said with the vast condition, one of the biodiversity and planting things. So I think there will be some potential benefits there. But as I say, I think you're starting from a position where, you know, it is what it is and they've just adapted that and they've reutilised most of the buildings and structures on the site. So I don't know if that's how it is, Chair, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Finch. Did you not find anything here? I've no, really no big time with that, we didn't learn that, really. Thank you very much. Okay, we've got two more councillors' questions. Are you okay to take those, Nick? Oh, Councilwoman McLean, did you want to come back?
Yes, I've just heard, and this is very clear, that you want to be said about the fencing and the trees. But the worry I have, the thing that this is all is the look of the site, is that fencing? And Parish Council said that, as well, it was just saying the same thing. Which is obviously going to do it a bit. So the case is how do we go about just that one single action that could be done to improve the site and make people feel that we have our own solution here? Is our conservation area, or how do you think?
Yes, I'd like to think about how we should deal with that, Councilwoman McLean. This will be a deferral, I think that's your approach?
I think we've been advised by the officers that we should think of something. I'm just trying to tease out if there is anything out there that will allow us to make that.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman McLean. Councilperson, do you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. My question, to direct the question to now, because we've given that a bit of a bluster and said the question. However, I will ask the question, and it doesn't matter whether it's Nicola or Simon, I'd choose to answer this to be interesting. Now, it's quite clearly contentious issue, but it's because an existing use of this site was a car wash facility. The change of use really is the host of this condition, something that's already happened, that it is, that it's no longer a petrol filling and diesel filling site. Although the infrastructure related to that is still part of the place, as is the canopy. Now, so it comes down to the fencing was not part of the original site. It's been up the security mixing, prior to the tanks being removed from the site. And it's an exercise in man being, and therefore, it's a question of whether or not, so that fencing is, what's that phrase in the law? It's a bit generous, it's a bit generous. I don't want to insert that, but as a part of this application, Fiona's advice is all the work was the plus. Plus, the fencing wasn't there originally. And so if we're talking about a change of use, there's none of the fencing, it isn't there. We say it wasn't there originally. I know I'm a big bit, I think I'm being ignorant. But first, I'll say anything. The other thing is, I agree entirely with what Parish Council is saying about fencing. Frankly, I'd like to cover it in the chat, but that's not an issue which the operators, if they're managing, grant this case of thought. The other question is, I would ask, is it possible to extend condition one? We're talking about on a subject seven, between a lot of native planting on the western boundary. I'm sure my direction to Bishop's Waltham, but I. Is the western boundary, does that part of it suffice it from the pond? Or is it boundary that separates it from the road? Our road is almost north west. It's a rhetorical question, isn't it? But could that boundary, boundary street be covered to the front to replace fencing which technically isn't there?
Interesting question, Councilperson. Mr. Parker, are you able to answer that question?
Yeah, yes, I am, Chair, thank you. Yeah, if I go from the last question to the first in that order. The western boundary is the boundary that fronts on to the North Pond. So if you're looking at that, hopefully you've got that photo in front of you. To the left-hand side of the canopy and the building, you can see vegetation, trees, et cetera. So that's the sensitive boundary from a biodiversity perspective. And the biodiversity report recommends that some enhancements are made to that boundary. So the reason for that condition is for biodiversity enhancements and not visual enhancements. So we've got to be careful as to what we're asking for and why we're asking for it in terms of meeting the tests for applying conditions. In terms of the use, Councilperson is quite right, it is, the application for us is for a change of use. It's a bit odd because the existing or the previous use of the site was for the petrol station, but it also had a car wash facility. But in planning terms, that's considered, that hasn't got a specific use class. Therefore, you can't go from this use class to any other use, including a car wash, without requiring an application to change its use. So we are sort of effectively, there is a change of use from a car petrol filling station to the car wash itself. And in terms of the fence, it doesn't form part of this planning application. So they are looking to apply for the change of use. They're looking for the retrospective drainage works and the concrete yard, but they're not looking at the moment through this application to apply for any fencing or boundary treatment. Hope that clarifies the matter, Chair.
I think we're all a bit confused about how we actually get rid of the fencing. But anyway, we've got two more councillors with questions, Councilwoman Westwood and then Councilwoman Nick.
Thank you, Chair. This has been a diverse site for a number of years. And as Sir Andrew Finch pointed out, it's an opportunity for local business which needs support and appeal. My concern is that should we grant permission for change of use that this site, as I can see in the photograph, that would perpetuate the quietest inferiority forwards? Could any condition be applied limiting the length of the change of use to a period that may allow future abuses?
Mr. Finch, I think we should be able to answer this one.
Yeah, the answer now, I mean, the primary permission, you said to give it temporary consent, you have to have a reason for giving a temporary planning permission, because most permissions for the poll are permanent, unless, you know, they are transit type uses and things like that. And there are certain circumstances where you need post-condition that after X years, two, three, five years, whatever is appropriate, a certain transit thing that that would be the test. What you shouldn't do actually is grant temporary permission for things where something, you know, permanent approval and then continually renew them, effectively going forward. Well, that's not good practice to do that. And that's not what the applicant's asked us to consider for you to consider today. So whilst you can give temporary permissions in certain circumstances, they're normally because occasionally you might want to give somebody a bit of a trial run to fully assess its impact, so you give it a temporary permission and then affirm if it's successful. Or more often actually, their uses or things which are temporary and they are only needed for a set period of time, then it could be a construction site, you know, or something of a compound or something needed and then it's not needed after that tour was finished and it goes after three years. So, but the applicant is asking us to grant that permanent permission. So that's the basis on which you would determine it today, I think. I think there's just one, again, in fact, I think there's a number of concerns raised about the boundary treatment. I think there's a Mr. Parker who's fairly familiar with the application indeed with Miss Peyton, whether or not, if we were to grant the change of use, this is not for him today. whether or not, if we were to grant the change of use, this is not for him today, whether it would be reasonable, notwithstanding the history of the fencing. And members of the council said earlier, it was there for security purposes where it was direct and shut off and decommissioned as a pet, very especially. Whether or not, given the fact we're dealing with biodiversity exception, whether Mr Parker gone on, whether we put this condition on. Do you want boundary treatments to be a bit like we've done with lighting? That's also a condition, obviously, as well as out of use. And I don't know whether Mr Parker would just point on whether we could add that in, whether he feels that that's a reasonable thing to do, given the concerns expressed and given the fact we have got some provisions on biodiversity and lighting details thing. And then Mr Parker points on this.
Yep, thank you, Chair. On reflection and listening to Mr Finch and the debate, it does seem like it could well be a solution to what is clearly troubling councillors in terms of its appearance. So if it, if it was deemed to be an associated detail of the change of use as, as the landscaping and the bird boxes are, then I, I professionally believe that that's a reasonable condition to impose. I'm wondering if we can sort of gauge from members what, what sort of and what type, what material, what height, what look of boundary treatment would be preferred? Because we've also got to consider the security aspects of business. And clearly they've got these, this fencing up to secure the site. So I'm, I'm just mindful of the balance there between it looking better, but also securing the site for obvious purposes. So yeah, I think it's a reasonable step forward. Just like to hear from members maybe what sort of boundary treatment they'd be looking for.
Thank you. That sounds more positive. Maybe you can consult with the parish council as well as the councillor's. Council McKay, did you want to comment just on that specific one?
Yes, I think that sounds like the way forward. And it gives us a chance to get away with the fencing, but it's just such an insult. But also the building has a lock on. When it was a petrol station, what was the other one? It's only a 12 hour thing. And then it was locked at night, right, so it was a duty to the building.
Right, okay. And Council Lee, do you have a question as well?
Yeah, I have a question regarding environmental protection. It's used for a car washing, if I remember right, it could be a code for any risk that we are creating. And we're beginning to show the fact that it could be recycled. We will create something that we are trying to use for this part because we have them.
Thank you. Mr Parker, do you know about the drainage?
Sorry, I really had struggled to hear what councillor Leaming, what his question was.
Concern about the environmental impact of the matter that would be draining away from the site.
Yeah, well, the solution is that the, effectively all the water, all the wastewater will be going through to the public sewer via the existing systems in place. So it's being tracked away from the sensitive North Pond and towards the main sewer running along Winchester Road. Now, southern water have accepted that connection and so have our, our own drainage engineers. But, but most important, I guess, for the, for the biodiversity and the wildlife, our own ecologist has supported that approach and has no objection to any pollution of waters within the sensitive North Pond site.
Thank you very much. Okay, have we got any more questions, members? I'm sorry, we can't have any questions in the parish council. Members, no, okay. So, Mr Finch, I hope you've been making good his notes. Can you just advise us how we can beam up the conditions and the policies, please?
Yes, I think so. I think it's been very helpful actually to listen to contributions and both of them, members of the parish council. And I think encouraged, I think, by what Mr Parker was saying there. I think having taken those considerations into account, what I think we would suggest you do, obviously you need to make a decision on the planning application in terms of its recommended favourably with the addition of our page 77 and or page 78. But what I would suggest, I think it is reasonable, we've considered it, had we gone through the questions. And I think we could add an additional condition requiring details to be seen to be refined and implemented for boundary treatments, which would even include, you know, entrance streets and things like that. So I think what I would do, I mean, I'm just looking at what's my legal policy is, I think it's delegate precise wording, like even the fact this is retrospective as well. So it's not a standard condition because obviously they're operating already. And if you grant a sense later, then they will have permission to continue. And whether we delegate the precise wording of that, is that something we're able to do?
Yes, Chair, that's what we've been traditionally doing, you know, some examples from this committee. So if we were minded to improve this, it would be subject to a condition to incorporate the wording that the someone has suggested. Delegate to some, I'm sharing, of course. And I do wonder whether that would actually be an amendment to the existing condition or an additional condition. But I'm aware, I think we can now do with it. And were there a couple of informatives that we should ask them to join the responsible car wash team and remind them about signage and this, with signage with the appropriate application?
Yes, yes, Chair, I would suggest, this is what Mr Hallby said there, but I think it might be all straightforward to have a set of it. The only books, they'll mix in biodiversity specific name. And yes, we could add the importance of regarding responsible car wash and signage. And as I said earlier in discussion, some signs may already be commissioned. But we can look at that from an enforcement point of view. If it's deemed consent, I was explaining that it's deemed consent. If it isn't, we can control it. So we could put information about signage and the responsible car wash team, but they wouldn't be petitions, Chair. Thank you.
Council McKay.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's feasible to put a timeline of the amount of time that is going to take this amendment or whatever to take. So we need to cover the ground for a bit, for a bit of time, Chair.
I think that would make completely reasonable.
The answer is yes. I have sort of thought of something, you know, I'd rather just think about that carefully. But yes, it could be, because it's retrospective, Council. Then we would need to put a timeframe on that for specific details and then might bring them and they gave the new permission.
Lovely, okay. Is there any other questions, members? So debate. Council Pearce.
I think, Chair, I think really the first answers to the questions was in the ways that gives us an approach to those studies, which is very obvious. Regarding the boundary studies, I'll probably forget about the condition. I don't know what type is, the difficulty I was, is that this is an industrial facility within an expanded housing provision area, which the bits, the expansions, no, it's not. It's still a sort of conservation initiative, as is by the diversity. And the discussion here is a garden plot within that sort of thing. The main consideration, of course, of this historic building, which is what was not related to the pond or the purpose, although they were of historical significance. But equally, I would include in the note, the pond we're talking about, with the sand pond as well, which seems to be, my own, since this has sort of drew any support of the site. However, this is about the old petrol filling station and whether they should be car washed. And I think, as the drainage brush narrated by Council Leary has been satisfactorily thanks to certain water. In other words, reconstruction of the drainage that was already on the site to make sure that it self fills the purpose after the normal tanks, which might result in damage to that drainage. And I think that really is certainly going to be very difficult. Otherwise, there's no doubt, well, not all of the problems, not being polluted by any input that comes from the site. Not deliberately so, but simply because that drainage hasn't been dealt with properly. The boundary treatments is not so much biodiversity point, that clearly is. That boundary with the pond clearly is, but it also aesthetic. A three metre fence, which I think is what the mindset of that fence is, where it's having a.